Good afternoon, welcome to the December 11th Administrative Meeting. And the first thing we need to do is set a public hearing, which is amending the Moscow Code Title VII, Chapter 1, 2, 3, 15 and 16 relating to the construction regulations. And Rod Hall, you're going to come talk about it?
Me too.
And Justin Goodman, our captain of the party.
Good afternoon.
Actually, this will be Justin Goodman. He's our building code official, and this is his expertise. And all I can do is mess it up.
Thanks, Rod. Thanks, Councilor, or excuse me, sorry.
Committee.
Thanks, committee. Right, the document we have in front of you is the amendments to the Title VII of Construction Regulations, our city code. During the process, the Idaho Legislature, through the appointed boards, adopts the building code for the state. And once they're adopted, local jurisdictions have a year to review the codes. And also, local jurisdictions, through that review process, have the ability to amend the codes, as long as the amendments that they make are at least equal or stricter to what the state has adopted. So, the city of Moscow has a Building Code Advisory Committee, and we started reviewing these codes July 12, 2017, and we met every Wednesday until August 23. The Building Code Advisory Committee is made up of local builders, tradespeople, design professional, building supply companies, with community development staff, and a council liaison. And the members include Chairman Doug Kenyon from Moscow Building Supply, Vice Chair Rich Beebe, he's a local developer, Adam Huff, he's our local plumbing contractor, Dan Broyles is our local mechanical contractor, Bill Havelin, our local home builder, Dennis Chatburn is our design professional architect for the committee. Staff is Justin Goodman, Rob Bafus, Rob DeVoe, and Joe Williams. And then our council liaison at the time was John Weber. The Building Code--
Yeah, that's right. I just wanted to have, is it okay to interrupt you?
Oh, yeah, no, go ahead. You got any questions?
Because I wanted to ask you about the advisory group.
Yes.
I wondered, because it looked like it had been a couple of years since the last update. Is it usually the same group of people? Or do you, then, when you know you've got to do it again, then you go and you seek again?
Normally, what I do is, is I send an email out to the, the group that we had before, okay? And see if they still want to be on it. If they, you know, we didn't have an electrician this year because the gentleman that wanted to be on the board had something happen to where he couldn't be on once we got started. So, I asked the chair if he was okay with us moving forward without the electrical contractor. The board had voted and said yes, they were, they were fine with that. So, like I said, normally what we'll do is we'll ask the people that were there if they want to do it again. If not, I'll go out and seek replacements for, for them. But as long as I've been here, the 15 years I've been here, the only two additions is Bill Havelin and Adam Huff. Pretty much, those gentlemen on there have been our local Building Code Advisory Committee.
So, it's been just consistent?
It's been consistent, yeah. And they do a wonderful job for us. I mean, I, I talk with several other jurisdictions around, and they can't believe that we can get local support like that. As a matter of fact, I talked to Hayden today, she was, the community development director was asking me where we're at in our process, and I was explaining to her where we're at. And she goes, "So, do you just review them, or who reviews them?" And then I explained the process with her, and she was in amazement. She was like, "That's, you know, that's a great idea." You know, you get buy-in that way.
Yeah.
So.
Thanks for the explanation.
So, the Building Code Advisory Committee reviewed the 2015 International Building Code, the 2015 International Existing Building Code, the 2012 International Residential Code, the 2012 International Mechanical Code, the 2012 International Field Gas Code, the 2015 Idaho State Plumbing Code, which is based off the 2015 Uniform Plumbing Code. What that is, is the plumbing board wanted to make a code for the state of Idaho, which would have a body, which is the Uniform Plumbing Code, with the state amendments in it, and it's one book that you could buy. So, and that's where it came out to be, the Idaho State Plumbing Code, then is based off the 2015 Uniform Plumbing Code. And then you have the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code with the 2009 amendments of the Residential, International Energy Conservation Code. What that is, is the state legislator, through the Building Code Board, they wanted to adopt the International Energy Conservation Code as a whole. Special interest groups came in and said, "Wait a minute, we want to pull out the 2015 residential portion of it and amend and put it back in the 2009. We like it, we want to keep it that way." So, that's how it was adopted through the state. And then we have the 2017 National Electrical Code.
So, Justin, is that the same, that example there, too, with the 2009 amendments? Is it true that that also would have to be more restrictive?
Well, only if we were to adopt it that way.
Okay, so not--
Because the state has adopted it that way. Now, that is, that is the code for the state of Idaho. Now, if we wanted to go back and say, "We want to adopt the 2015 as a whole," in theory, Rod and I would have to sit down and, and talk it through and find out, "Okay, is the 2015 residential portion stricter than the 2019, or is it equal?" And if we can find proof in that, then at that point in time, we could adopt it as, as a whole, as a body and whole.
So, I have one more question, and trying to understand this one.
Yeah.
When I looked at this whole thing and saw what was in the code, but you use all those documents to make this code, but those are the reference documents? So, like, if you wanted to have more clarification, then you'd go into the electrical code? I just--
Well, one way to look at it is, when you adopt those codes, those other volumes--
Yeah.
Like, International Building Code, the Fire Code, all those ones, they're not put into our book, they're referenced, but they are part of it. So, whatever's in that book, we will adopt it, is part of our code, even though it's not within the binding of our book, but it is still part of it. So, all they're doing is adopting it, and then they'll make references to what they want to change, what they want to keep, and make more restrictive.
Okay.
Equal or more restrictive.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Because otherwise, our book would be, would be huge.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Patty would kill me.
All right. In, in the IBC, the committee, Building Code Advisory Committee, in Section 107, they wanted to add a little bit of language to clarify when a design professional is needed. Basically, way it's set right now is, it's, it's kind of up to the building official when it is needed. It was not drawn out of exactly when it was needed. And the Co., the Building Code Advisory Committee felt like there needs to be a better definition that would fit our area, so we can make sure that everybody is treated equal. So, they wanted to add to that section, if, in the document, a, "The nature work applies for such that it does not affect the structural components, life, and fire safety requirements, or accessibility. If you, if you fall within any of that, you would need a design professional." And, and I had Dennis Chatburn, our design professional, look at that, and have him come up with the wording, and he looked at me and he goes, "Justin, I don't need any more work." You know, so, but, yeah. And, and I feel more, I feel comfortable with that, that addition. It kind of, I'll be able to, to take it and, and may, it'll be treated the same for everybody. You come in, you follow into this, you need a design professional, or no, you don't. Under Section 1019, the committee proposed, and wanted to add to the, the code regarding stretcher access in ambulatory care facilities. Where this came about was through the fire department. We've got a couple areas in town that, that they meet code. They meet code today, they would meet the code now as adopted by the state, but we, we can't get our stretcher in and out of there. And so, the fire department, through my office, we came up with, with an idea of saying, "Okay, we need to, we need to have something in the body of the code that would allow somebody to still have a place, but we can get people in and out of there safely." And so, they added this section under there that says, "Exit access in ambulatory care facility with a ramp. The ramp landing at the egress door shall be 80 inches wide by 64 inches." Now, you asked me, "Where did I come up with those numbers?" Well, I spent probably an hour down at the fire station with Joe, and at the time, our EMS division chief was, not Debbie--
Dave.
Dave, excuse me, thank you. Dave Reynolds. And we took the stretcher out of the ambulance, and we maneuvered it around and put barricades up, and that was, that was what we came up with, be able to get somebody out. Obviously, we wanted to make sure there was an exception, because we didn't want to cut and dry it, so we added the exception to it, to where you may get, there are other means to be approved by the authority having jurisdiction of the fire department. So, that will allow Joe, myself, and the chief to go out, look at it, and see the, see what they got, maybe come up with something a little bit easier, so they won't have to put this big, huge landing out. Then, Section 3002.4 of the IBC, they wanted to amend the section requiring stretchers for elevators. In this section, right now, the way it is, is it's four more, if you have an elevator. Not every building is required to have an elevator, but if you put one in, then one of them has to meet the stretcher requirements. Our committee looked at that through the fire department, the fire department came to us and asked, "Hey, you know, we've got a lot of three-story buildings that they put a, a elevator in, you know, and a lot of them are nursing homes, places like that. The way the code's written, if you go three stories, you know, you don't need to, you don't have to have the stretcher capabilities." And so, they thought, you know, they asked the fire department, you know, "What's a good compromise?" And, and three stories was a compromise to come up with. And that will fit in any building. That would fit your, your apartment buildings, if they decide to put one in, any of your ambulatory care facilities, any places like that.
So, to end understanding this with the new building that's going in south of town, when we adopt these--
Unfortunately, not. The codes aren't retroactive.
I know.
Yeah, so, it's, it's under the 2012, or what we have adopted right now.
Yeah. I just wondered, because they're still building.
Because that's what we're reviewing. Yeah. Actually, those elevators that they're going to put in are fairly good-sized, the two elevators they're putting in. So, it's funny, we're kind of ahead of the curve when it comes to requiring the elevator sizes, but the elevator code's starting to catch up really quick. So, you're going to see amendments coming out to where elevators are going to be pretty good-sized going in there.
I don't know how likely it is to happen, but if an existing building were to add an elevator, would they be required to follow this?
That's where we'd have to go into the existing building code and kind of follow what the rules and regulations. If, if it states that if you put an elevator in, you will meet Section, you know, Chapter 30 of the IBC, then yes, they would meet. But they might have their other own regulations in there, and it all depends on the building, things like that, on that one.
Sounds like an attorney.
Yeah. Not going to you.
So, this is specific to new buildings?
This is specific, yeah, exactly, specific to new buildings being constructed, or additions. You know, if you, if you do an addition onto a building that's going to have an elevator, that addition would have to meet these requirements. In Section 3002.4, this is a new section, they wanted to add per elevators again. Once we got this talking about three stories or more, then we started looking at the Good Sams and places like that, and a lot of those are two stories. And so, the committee, through the fire department, looked at those healthcare facilities, and they wanted to lower those to two stories. So, if you, if you put an elevator two stories, you have to meet the requirements for the, the stretcher of, of Section 3002.4. So, that's the reason why they added that new section in there. And obviously, like you guys were talking earlier, the committee was able to delete a ton of old sections.
Oh, my gosh, yes.
Talking with Dennis Chatburn, who's been on the committee probably since it started, back in the Larry Betts days, he was looking at us going, "Hey, there's some stuff in here that isn't even relevant anymore." You know, we need to, we need to really go through this code. And I got to look, and, you know, once we get to the plumbing code and stuff, you'll see we took out a bunch of the licensing stuff, because at one time, we used to license those people for the city, and we no longer do that, it's through the state, so it shouldn't be in our code anymore.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, under the existing building code, the committee reviewed that document, and they had no changes. They were fine with what was proposed by the state. The 2012 IRC, which is the International Residential Code, International Mechanical Code, and International Field Gas Code, those were basically, when adopted by, they were already adopted by the state prior, they just kept them. They didn't, it's just, everything stayed the same. And so, we just got, at that point, re-look at them, and when we did, the committee came up, and they, there's, under Section 312.1, there was a couple of exceptions in there that the committee started looking at, that we, they would like to delete. And what they are, is if you have a handrail or a guard on the open side of stairs, the International Resident, Residential Code allows you to bring it down to 34 inches. A regular guard, through the Residential Code, is 36 inches. So, they thought that that was, that was unsafe, you know, to do that. So, the code, so they would like to remain and have all guards be at 36 inches minimum, no matter if it's on the open side of stairs or not. And that's, that's the reason why they looked at that one. And then in Table 40, 4.1, and 4.1.2, and parentheses 2 and 3, for about 15 years, the, this, the, excuse me, sorry, the city of Moscow has had their own chart for installing rebar into foundation walls. We had our design professional, Dennis Chatburn, look at what we were doing versus what's in the code. And he actually said, "We are requiring way more bar than what the code is, is requiring." So, we did a little bit more digging, looking, do we want to go with what's in the code, or do we want to stay with what we've been doing for over 15 years? All the, the local contractors are used to it, they want to keep it that way. We've talked to a few of them, they were all happy with what was there. So, we thought at this time, let's stop making it a policy, let's put it actually in the code. And so, in this section, that's why the committee wanted to put this section in the code, to amend that table.
Yeah, that's cool.
And then, the committee had no changes for the International Mechanical Code or the International Field Gas Code. The Idaho State Plumbing Code and International Energy Conservation Code, the, the committee really looked at, the only thing they wanted to do is add in Table 41, which is our plumbing fixture table. They wanted to make sure we kept the two footnotes that we've been using. Under those footnotes, basically, it allows you to get rid of a water closet if you add a urinal, as long as you don't lessen the requirements more than two-thirds of the minimum requirement for water closets. And when the committee looked at that, they obviously know what gets used more, you know? So, and then, also, they wanted to keep the footnote for not requiring occupancies to put drinking fountains in for, excuse me, for occupant loads of 30 or less. A lot of times, they have a, a water cooler, or they'll have some other means to get water in those smaller occupancies. So, they were, they wanted to make sure we kept those in. And then, the only change to the IECC, or the International Energy Conservation Code, was just deleting some of the sections out of there that were unnecessary, in, in the, we already had in the code, or the code now has come up to what the city of Moscow's been already doing. And that, they were, they were happy with all the other language that's in there. They were kind of disappointed that we weren't adopting the 2015 as a whole, but, you know, I told them, "Hold on, we might be back in a year," you know? So.
I had my question, I had a question on the International Energy Conservation Code, just because it's new, and, which I thought was cool, about the fans.
Yeah.
But does that mean, so that when somebody builds, we are going to have whole-house fans? I guess I just--
Yeah, we're requiring whole-house fans now. And, and basically, what that does is you're trying to get an air changeover in the house. It's, it's funny you bring that up, because I just had a call from a lady. She was telling me that she, at first, thought she had a ghost in her house, because about 4:00 in the morning, every morning, her fan, her bathroom fan would kick on. Then she finally figured it out. And then she asked kind of the same questions, why she has to have it in there, and, and it's just for air changes. You want to make sure you move the air in the building, so. Yeah, we've, we've required that for over 15 years, and now the, the code's finally catching up to us.
Oh, that's cool. No, I thought it was really, I was really glad to see that on the code, yeah.
National Electrical Code, committee took a look at that document. The only change that they really wanted to do is they wanted to add a little language to better define when a disconnect is needed in a commercial building. We, we had our electrical inspector, Rob DeVoe, look it over. We brought in a local contractor at that time, Travis Lambert, for him to review, to help guide the committee, and also me and everybody that really doesn't know electrical that much. And they came up with, one of the biggest problems is, is when a disconnect is needed and when it's not. It's just all over the place. So, the committee came up with a, "When a single disconnect is serving more than one piece of equipment, each piece of equipment shall have its own disconnect with inside of the equipment." And then they wanted to add an exemption to that, which is residential installation shall be exempt from installing more than one disconnect, because, you know, you put in several mini-splits, the heating and cooling units in your house, you don't want to have a bunch of disconnects through your house. So, this is more for a commercial application, your, your hotels, apartment buildings and So, our next step, under Code Section 394103, this is where local jurisdictions amend the state and adopt, amend state-adopted codes. We will conduct a public hearing on the proposed amendments. That hearing has been scheduled for council upcoming December 18. And staff will recommend that the committee forward the proposed ordinance to the City of Council for public hearing and adoption. And with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Just one, it was kind of hard to discern with all the red, was the sprinkler requirement for care units with over five residents. Was that a yes, or?
That's a, that's an actual yes. Yeah, I, I was looking at that as well, because you had it underlined, but then you had a big section that was lined out. That was, that basically is just a carryover from what is already in the code.
Cool.
They just kept it, kept it through.
Yeah. Well, I thought it was really interesting to read.
Yes.
Yeah, so, you know, so I thought it was really cool.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I don't have any other questions.
No, nope.
Okay, so then, we, this will go on the regular agenda, and--
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. And then, we get to cancel our December 26 council administrative committee, seems like that because of the holidays.
Heck, yes.
Yeah.
Typically canceled, it's usually a slow meeting, and people have other commitments that week.
Yeah, so, that's done, and then you want to go ahead and move on?
I do, I'm actually, I'll stand at the podium--
Okay.
--so I can show you a few visuals.
I've been looking forward to this. Thanks.
So, just an update on our website project that we began last May. We are working with Civic Plus as our contractor. Let me turn this on. This doesn't get interesting for a minute. Just want to talk about some of the phases we've gone through as the projects move forward, following a pretty strict project management-type style, which has helped tremendously in us giving feedback to our, or, excuse me, our contractor, and also to get information from them. So, we started back in May with the kickoff. We had quite some time to collect photos, logos, different types of things for them to work with when they began design. Phase one was design discovery meeting. We looked at a lot of websites from different communities, and were able to say, "Okay, we like this, we don't like that." And when I say "we," I should mention, we've got a team of folks working on this project. So, it's myself, Lori Hopkins, our city clerk, Nate Sur from Engineering over in Public Works, and then we've got Jessie Flowers, our Information Systems Director, and Nicole Baker from the Water Department. So, as we went through some of the different websites that are out there, we looked at both Civic Plus websites and others to get an idea of just the types of features we thought would work well for us. With that feedback, Civic Plus was able to go out and put together a layout and color proposal. We did get a design draft in about August of that, of the last year. We went back and forth with Design Plus, or, excuse me, Civic Plus, on the design from then on, to get to a more finalized design. And I'll show you here, these are some of our before and after examples. Where we are at in the process right now is Civic Plus took our current website as of late November, and began transitioning over the different pages that we have. So, these are some examples of their transition, as they've gone through kind of what it looks like now, and what it will look like in the future. So, a floodplain, for instance, it's been broken up with some different subheadings. You'll see a lot of the new site will have the same type of columns. We'll also have call-out boxes for links and things like that. There's a loss, quite a bit more capability to do a click with a dropdown, which I'll show you with an FAQ page here in just a second. Part of what we'll also see is a completely different color scheme, fonts, those types of things. And these, every single one of our pages will size appropriately, whether you're on a mobile phone, or a tablet, computer, whatever, they will all adjust accordingly, which is, is a feature that we do not have on our current website, that we're looking forward to implementing. So, for instance, this is our public meetings site right now, and this is information on what to expect at public meetings. They've got some different widgets, and this is a good example here, this FAQ widget. So, you're able to click on this, and the information will pop up, rather than having a very long page, which is typically what we see now. There's a lot of scrolling with our current page, as information is listed from top to bottom, instead of in hyperlink-type fashions. And then, for, this is our police history page, so this is a good one to show the examples of pictures and what it will look like, you know, with the new changes. You'll also see some of the different functionality with Google Maps, as we are able to implement that a little bit more. Social media will also be another widget that can be implemented. And those, so those are three overview pages that can kind of give you an idea of what you'll see. The new website is, does, is supposed to go live on January 15, and we've stayed on track, and so we're looking forward to that coming out mid-January. We'll be doing some training at the staff level at the end of December, and middle of January. We'll actually get our hands on a version of it late December, start working out some kinks. Any updates that were made after the end of November, we'll have to go through and make those updates to the new site. So, there's some meeting things that happen that won't be relevant, but there are some things that we'll have to update that have changed significantly since then. So, with a couple of weeks to make those updates, January 15th will come up on us, I'm sure, very quickly. We'll get some information out to let folks know that the new website's coming, and then we'll...
Launch it.
So, as terrifying as I, it will be really great. I'm very excited, but it's a big process to go through, and so, it's been kind of a pleasure to work on a project like this.
Just kind of, oh, sorry.
I was just going to ask, still maintain the functionality for paying utility bills and parking tickets and things?
Yeah, so, all of our online bill pay, parking tickets, reservation, or, excuse me, reserving facilities or making registrations for perks and rec, all of that will maintain the same processes we have now. Those are actually different software programs that we will link into our website through an iframe. So, that functionality won't change. It'll look a little bit different when you go and click on "I want to pay my online water bill", but other than that, it will work the same as it has in the past.
Actually, is it a separate issue that we encountered some discussion with about making the water bills in units that are more easily grasped? Is that part of this, or is that a separate?
That is not part of the website update, but I understand the sentiment for wanting to do that, yes. One of the other features that we'll see is, really, the layout of the website should be much more intuitive. The main page will have a lot more options for us to categorize information and put more on the main page. We're a little limited in the options that we have now, so I think that'll probably be the biggest benefit of this moving forward.
How old is the current?
Our last redesign was in, I think, 2008, I believe. 2006, 2008, if I remember correctly.
Well, it's done a lot. I mean, considering the amount of documents on there.
We've got a lot of information. It's great that we have it on there, but we just need to make it easier for people to find.
Does this also contain a, a good search engine to find what you need?
There is a search feature right at the top on that main page, and that'll carry over to other pages as well.
Excellent.
You have a couple of different ways to get to where you want to go with this site.
And then, I was just curious, and all the work that you all have done as a, as a group, how much rewriting have you done, or how much have you been able to just move?
We've asked folks to pay attention to their websites, where pages at all times. There will be, I think, some rewriting that will come with the new site as we learn the different ways we can present information. Yeah, so it's, that'll be an ongoing process, so...
Yeah, and then we're going to be able to keep up with visits and all that kind of stuff.
Absolutely. Our analytics on this new site will be much better than what we currently have.
Yeah, so, that's good. This has been a long time, but a lot. So, I'm, I'm excited to see it, too. I've been telling people about it as well.
Good deal.
Yep. Anything else?
Good by me. I'm glad to see things progressing so rapidly at this point. Almost done.
It hasn't felt rapid, but now we're, now we're at the home stretch. So, I appreciate your patience, so...
Will they come and do any kind of the, the organization, what were they called? Civic Plus? Will they, will they be here when you...
We'll schedule our training for the first week of January, and we don't have all the specifics on that quite yet. We just know that they will be here. I think they'll be here for a couple of days, and we'll do some web training as well.
Can they do with us, too, council?
For content management?
Oh, no. Just, I think, in terms of, you know, because I'm always trying to get people to, I'm like, that document's on there. If you just searched, you know, like, if that way, we could know what's available?
I think what we could do is an overview of the new website to council, either in a workshop, or I don't know if you'd want to take meeting time to do that, but we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I just think to see all the things that are incorporated, especially with all the different ways you've been trying to link all the information that...
It should be much easier, fingers crossed. But we'd be happy to go over that with you.
Okay. Great. All right. If that's it, then, then I guess we're done for this, today's meeting.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.